Good morning. It's my pleasure to call this work session of the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality to order. Today is April 25, 2019. The time is 9:30. It's a good opportunity for us to get together and discuss in a more informal setting some of the business before the agency. And this morning, we have the legislative session to talk about appropriations, get an update on some of the legislation we're tracking, as well as talk about internal and external website. So with us today, of course, are Commissioner Emily Lindley, Mary Smith for the General Counsel's Office, Executive Director Baker, Deputy Executive Director Stephanie Bergeron Perdue, Public Interest Council, and all of our, not all of, but several of our wonderful staff. So with those compliments out of the way, I'll ask Mary to kick it off.
Item number one is discussion regarding the status of the agency's request for fiscal year 2020 through 2021 appropriation and the fiscal year 2019 supplemental appropriation.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioner, General Counsel, and Public Interest Council. For the record, I'm Elizabeth Cifuentes-Coke, Director of the Budget and Planning Division within the agency. I'm here to discuss the status of the agency's appropriation request for 2019 and the appropriation request for 2020 and 2021 as relates to the 86th legislative session. The first item I'll cover is SB 500 by Senator Nelson. This is a supplemental appropriations that provides funding for this fiscal year. A conference committee was appointed. The Senate includes Chairman Nelson, Senator Huffman, Senator Cochrane, Senator Taylor, and Senator Hinojosa. I feel like Grow Call. Sorry. The House includes Chairman Zurwos, Representative Rose, Representative Caprignone, Representative Mary Gonzalez, and Representative Miller. The agency has two items included in the supplemental that we've requested. The first one is for expedited processing of air permit application. The bill appropriates all revenues collected from the expedited surcharge in excess of the comptroller's biennial revenue estimate. It also includes litigation for the Rio Grande Compact. The bill appropriates 1.4 million for litigation expenses. As a result of current expenditure trends for expert witnesses and the outside counsel, the agency has revised the funding request to 2.3 million. Those are the items that we've requested for the supplemental appropriations. With regards to the budget bill, or House Bill 1, a conference committee was appointed. The Senate includes Chairwoman Nelson, Senator Huffman, Senator Cochrane, Senator Taylor, and Senator Nichols. The House includes Chairman Zurwos, Representative Longoria, Representative Davis, Representative Greg Bonham, and Representative Wally. For Article VI agencies, Senator Nichols is appointed as the subcommittee and Representative Wally on the House.
Elizabeth, can I ask a quick question? On the supplemental bill, on the expedited part, so can you talk real quick about, so you said it removes the cap, I guess, that's there, and so we could spend what we collect over the BRE?
Yes.
Do we have, is it just a blanket amount, or is there a number there?
There's no.
Go ahead.
There's no specified amount. We would have access to anything above what we estimated to be the BRE, which is, we estimated 500,000. So whatever we collect above that amount is appropriated to the agency.
And that's till the end of this year?
Yes.
Okay. So once, assuming that bill, if it were to pass, we could start spending those dollars again, because right now expedited funding is, we about hit the cap, is my understanding?
Yes, we've hit the cap. We did receive notification from the LBB that we could utilize funding within the agency to supplement the rider, so we're currently doing that. We are working towards getting retroactive payment authority within the supplemental bill to be able to utilize those appropriations that we collect for the surcharge.
Great. Thanks.
Okay, so the agency requested 10 exceptional items totaling 12.8 million. We also requested four rider revisions. Items adopted by the House and the Senate will not require review by the conference committee or decisions by the conference committee. Those items include supplemental hazardous waste funding at 1 million, litigation for the Rio Grande Compact at 2.4 million, and reallocation of appropriation of 1 million between the PST and Superfund Program. We also were received approval of the rider revision to exempt disaster-related recoveries from the capital budget provisions. And those are the items that will not require review. And the items that do require review by the conference committee include our exceptional item for expedited processing of air permits application. The House adopted our 10 FTEs, and the Senate did not. We also have a rider revision for expedited permits that request to remove the cap, also authorize carry forward between biennium. And the House adopted both items. The Senate only adopted removal of the cap. Enhance the municipal solid waste program. We requested eight FTEs and 932,000. That was adopted by the House, and the Senate did not adopt. Enhance and expand mobile monitoring. We requested 1.5 million. It was adopted by the House with Economic Stabilization Fund, and the Senate adopted one vehicle, did not adopt any of the cameras within that item, and did adopt microscope. Vehicles and other transportation items of 2.4 million, the House adopted with Economic Stabilization Fund. It was not adopted by the Senate. CAPS HR payroll implementation of 1.6 million and 10 FTEs was adopted by the House with Economic Stabilization Fund. It was adopted by the Senate at 7.5 FTEs and 1.2 million. Corpus Christi lease was placed in Article 11 by the House, and the Senate was placed in Article 11 with 250,000. The last exceptional item is reinstate reductions to base budget, which includes PCs, technical operations, air modeling, and printers of 642,000. It was adopted with Economic Stabilization Fund in the House, and it was adopted by the Senate. With regards to riders, we have the environmental radiation and perpetual care rider. We requested access to all revenue and access to the fund balance. The House adopted all revenue, and it placed the fund balance in Article 11. The Senate adopted 5 million plus new revenue and only allows the funds to be expended in a lamp recite. The capital budget expenditures, where we request authority to purchase capital budget items with savings from vacancies, it was placed in Article 11 by the House and not adopted by the Senate. And those, it concludes the items within the agency that we've requested. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Appreciate the report. I don't have any questions. Commissioner Lindley?
When you say those are all of, are there any things that are in the budget, I guess, it's kind of a broad question, but that affect us, that we didn't ask for, that you can go over?
Yes, I can. There are three other items. One is with regards to the air quality planning rider.
Okay.
The House placed 6 million, also added additional areas that would be available to receive that funding. The Senate included $3 million and also revised the rider to specify how the funds should be used. LIREP is included in the budget in the House at 98 million, and the Senate did not include the LIREP. TERP, the House remains the same as we requested. For the Senate, they reduced the emissions reduction incentive grants by 3 million and placed it with the government alternative fuel fleet. I think that's a gaffe. Don't remember that acronym off the top of my head, but something to that extent.
Thanks.
There is one other item that I'll add that impacts all agencies, but that is not current in our provisions. We're required to pay payroll contribution for health and retirement benefits. It's currently at 1.5. They're, in the House, they've increased that by another half percent, so it would be 2% that we would require to support if it continues through conference committee.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else?
I don't think so.
Mr. McWhorter?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from ED before we move on to the next item?
I don't think so. We will, as soon as we can, we're going down to meet with the conference committee members to start having discussions and try to answer questions that they may have about some of these issues.
Great. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number two is discussion regarding the status of legislation being tracked by the agency during the 86th regular session.
Good morning.
Good morning, Farrell.
This is my first time doing this, so bear with me.
This is fun. Yeah. You got the mic on. That's a good start.
I know. Step one, so. Thank y'all for having me this morning. As y'all know, we're kind of in full swing downtown, so for the record, I'm Farrell Fields. I'm the Director of the IGR Division. We have only 32 more days left. Not that any of us are counting, but everything is in full swing. Bills are moving. Committees are meeting. Lots of bills are moving quickly. So I wanted to just start off with a quick update of the four legislative recommendations that you all approved back in the fall. The first one is expedited permitting, SB 698. It has passed the Senate and has been voted out of House Environmental Reg. It authorizes TCQ to use expedited permitting surcharges to fully fund FTEs working on expedited air permits and to support the expedited permitting program. The next legislative recommendation is the Air Rule E Notice, which is SB 534 by Birdwell. It has passed the Senate yesterday, and this would require TCQ to provide notice on the agency's website of a hearing to adopt a rule under the Texas Clean Air Act. The third legislative recommendation is HB 2914 by Representative Bell and SB 1810 by Senator Lucio. The House bill was placed on the House calendar, and the Senate bill has been referred to the Committee on Water and Rural Affairs. And this would just allow the ED to dissolve districts without going to the commission. The last legislative recommendation is HB 1964 by Representative Ashby. It has passed the House, and it's been referred to the Committee on Water and Rural Affairs. This bill would streamline the TCQ's water rights permitting process for water rights applications that will have no impact on the environment or senior or junior water rights. So those are the four legislative recommendations that are moving at this time. Kind of the next thing I kind of wanted to talk about is the TERP bills that we're kind of closely monitoring. The first one is Representative Bell's HB 3745. It has been voted out of House Environmental Reg, and what that would do would be, it would create a trust fund where fee revenues would be redirected, and it would allow TCQ to administer all funds collected. So we're really tracking that one at the, right now, so that one's moving.
Farrell, is that the instrument to reauthorize the fees that would otherwise expire? No, we'll get to that.
The committee substitute, the committee substitute does extend the fees.
Okay.
Extend them till when? Till attainment?
The next TERP bill that we're following is Senator Birdwell's 531. It has passed the Senate and has been referred to House Environmental Reg, and that one would just fee, extend the fees for two more years. The last TERP bill that we're closely following is Representative Lozano's HB 1746, and it's been voted out of House Environmental Reg. This would just extend the TERP, extend TERP to attainment, and it would allow up to $1 million for contract labor and up to 5 million to demonstrate impact of foreign emissions. So those are the three TERP bills that we're closely monitoring. Three other bills that would have significant impact on the agency if they were to pass is HB 2771 by Lozano and SB 1585 by Senator Hughes. The House version has passed, it's passed the House, and the Senate has passed Senate Natural Resources. And this would transfer the permitting of produced water, hydrostatic water testing, and gas plant effluent from the ROA Commission to TCQ. And it would also require TCQ to seek federal delegation for NITD's permitting by 2021. The second bill is Representative Casals HB 3114, and it's been voted out of House Environmental Reg, and it would move the contested case hearings from SOA to TCQ. The last one that I was going to just touch on is HB 723 by Larson and SB 724 by Perry. The House, the bill's been passed the House, and the, it was heard last night at Senate Water and Rural Affairs and was passed and was sent to the floor. And this would require the commission to develop updated WHAMs for the Brazos, Red, Rio Grande, and Netches River Basins. We're also tracking around 50 APO bills at the moment. None of them have moved out of committee, but we're closely keeping an eye on all those, so we'll kind of keep y'all updated on that. So with that, that's just a very small snapshot of the 827 bills that we're tracking. So with that, if y'all have any questions, I know there's staff here that if y'all want to really get into the weeds.
I've got a quick question about the WHAMs. How do we pay for that?
It would be however they appropriate, either general revenue or the Water Resource Management account is, the accounts that would be impacted.
Okay. Not specified in the particular bill, though?
No.
Yeah. Thank you.
Can I follow up on that?
Yeah.
Is there, so is there anything corresponding in the budget that, right now, that's linked to that bill?
No. If the bill passes, then typically a contingency rider's included in the General Appropriations Act, and it's generally Article 9, Section 18. And 18 won't come out until they have a committee bill, I mean, a conference committee bill.
Do we know the cost of the, if that bill were to pass?
I believe the committee substitute was 2.2 million.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't think I have any questions. You hit on most, all the bills I think I really wanted to hear about. If I do have questions, I'll go find you.
Mr. McWhorter, any?
I appreciate the update. I don't have any questions.
Can I ask one more?
Yeah.
The, on the TERP bills that are out there, I know there's some discussion if we were to get more money at the end of this, the administrative piece of it, is there anything at this point that addresses the administrative cost to the agency?
Not at this time.
Okay.
And I'll add, just, I did talk with LBB about the administration limits with regards to if they were to appropriate funds in appropriations and to allocate funds if Bell's bill was to pass, then LBB anticipates that we would have access to 8 million within the appropriations and 8 million in the trust. So a total of 16 million to distribute the grants.
Okay.
I'll ask one kind of follow-up question. On the Representative Bell's bill, almost caught me up there. Can you just talk about it a little? I mean, the setting up of a trust and, you know, what that means, really? Just a brief explanation's all I'm looking for.
Sure. So the bill creates a trust fund. It also continues the TERP account. The TERP account would continue to maintain the fund balance, and all revenue would be deposited to the trust account. The trust account, at the end of the biennium, any funds that had not been obligated would be transferred back to the TERP account. So the TERP account would continue to increase its fund balance as long as we're not able to spend what's in the trust fund.
Can I ask more of just a structural question? So, and I'm thinking about when we're putting our LAR together for the next session, if it's, if this trust exists, what is our, your total, you know, request? Is it reflected? If it's going to a trust account, how, that would be then removed from our request? And it would?
It would not be subject to appropriations. Now, there are other reporting requirements for funds that are not held within the appropriations, so we'd still report, but I don't believe it would be within our legislative appropriations request because it's not required.
So our LAR in the future would, could possibly drop by $150 million?
Yes. We would be authorized to expend all funds within the trust.
Okay.
Along those lines, what is the estimated revenue for 2021 for TERP?
Around 270 million a year, plus some.
Okay.
And one more thing on that bill is the grant programs in the trust account would still be subject to the allocations provided in statute.
Appreciate that. Anything else? All right, I think we're done with the.
Thank you both.
Thank you. I think we're done with the legislative piece of this and on to internal and external communications website.
Item number three is the discussion regarding the agency's internal and external websites, including the process for maintaining updated content and links.
Good morning, Ryan.
Good morning, Commissioners, General Counsel, Public Interest Council. My name's Ryan Bies, for the record. I'm the Director of External Relations Division here at the agency. I'm going to give you kind of a high-level overview of our kind of website, external, public-facing relative documents, what we have out there, and what we're doing within our division to kind of cull some of the outdated documents. So approximately, we approximately have 5,000 webpages as of March that are public-facing, meaning the public has access to those webpages. We do have some that are not what we call published webpages, and we see those on our side. Public does not have access to those.
How many unpublished do we have?
I'm going to call up my expert, Renee Carlson.
Renee, I'd like you to talk about them a little, kind of what's on those, because I don't ever want a accusation made that we're not being fully open to the public.
Transparent, right.
Fully, thank you, transparent. So talk about, you know, what's on those pages and, I guess, why they're not viewable to the public, please.
Sure. Renee Carlson, Publishing Manager in External Relations Division. Anything that is not published is simply because it's something that unpublished on its own because nobody looked at it, and so it's something that used to be published, or it's something that's being worked on to publish. So there's nothing just sitting there for people, because internally, you can't even see them unless you can log in. So it's not like, you know, we've got stuff that for people, internal is done through ShareNet, the internal site. Assets is different, though. That's not webpages, that's documents. And that's where there can be a whole lot of documents that are out there, and we have a project that we're working on. Would you want to talk about?
Yes, so just to kind of go on the unpublished, so websites, webpages that are being developed or taken down for maintenance for whatever reason, there is a schedule that most of those webpages have on a yearly basis where our folks are notified that, hey, this is, every, every year it comes up, and if we don't act on it or do something, then it will become unpublished. So we get notifications on that through web CMS, and that's the way we kind of track how many people are clicking on those webpages, those type of things. We have access to all that kind of data that we kind of look at, and then we work with the programs and other divisions to see if those webpages are still relevant or not. So we don't automatically just shut down a webpage just because it's not being clicked on. We double-check with the other divisions to make sure those, whatever's on those webpages are still relevant to the website.
And how are we handling Record Retention Act obligations? I'm not sure what the schedule might look like for webpages, and I'm imagining it may be different depending on the contents of a particular webpage.
It does, it does. And for most part, webpages, the State Library and Archives sweeps the site, so they're constantly updating and for record purposes for webpages. I believe that they probably, anything that's being linked to on our site that's a document also would fall under that. But when it comes to making sure, deciding, okay, how long do we need to post something? That's the individual program area would know their records. So for instance, agendas, how long do we need to have those up? So that's not something that our division tracks. Each division, they own their content, and they need to keep track of that themselves. But there's webpages, and then there's documents. So the webpages, there is a good system, because they have the annual review. That doesn't mean that people always take a real good look at pages. I mean, people get busy, so it's not, there's human error that can happen in that. But it was never that stuff is up there that shouldn't be up there. It was, it was always public.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, it just may be old. So, but for web, for the documents, however, and that's where we've got a project that we started working on actually a year ago with IRD, and now all the programs in the agency, their lead internet developers and web developers are working on it, kicked it off in July of 2018, because there is no lifecycle for what's called the assets directory. It's like a network drive, but it's public-facing. So there are approximately, let's see, this was as of June, back in June, but 47,500 files, those are PDFs, documents, and images that are linked to from the public website. Now, there's a webpage that's got the image pulled in, or it's linking to those PDFs, but that's only 20% of the total files that are out there, okay? So we need to get a handle on that. So we basically are kind of duplicating a project that we finished up two years ago to move from the static TNET that was around back then for years and move it into a content management system through web CMS into someplace where we can track these documents and see if they're still being linked to and whether they're still, should be up there. That's going to take us a little while, about two and a half more years till the end of that project. So that'll help the lifecycle. There will not be a lifecycle on those files, but we can run reports on them at that point and determine, like I say, what's being linked to, and then, you know, do some cleanup from that. When we moved from TNET to ShareNet, we basically ditched 2/3 of the content. So given that only 20% of the content right now is being linked to, I'm thinking we're probably going to be about the same when we get through this project.
So that, that content that wasn't brought forward, what, what became of that? Is it, is it simply not published but residing somewhere on a server, or we were able to delete those documents, or?
You talked about the internal site, when we ditched those, yeah, most of those were, right, people either archived them elsewhere because they're maybe records they need to keep, or they're thinking they need them, but they don't need to be part of a system that everybody sees. It's just clutter, it's not needed, and a lot of stuff was simply deleted because it was no longer relevant.
And that was left to the discretion of the program areas, right?
Yes, yes. They own their content.
Okay.
So we delegate that decision to them.
Yeah.
And just to add.
Go ahead.
The internal, the ShareNet, as we call it now, that's what the agency employees view, and it can have information like organizational charts for the division.
Policies, guidelines within their programs.
So for everybody tuning in to the work session, just to elaborate a little bit about what the ShareNet is for the, for agency employees versus the public website.
Appreciate that. I didn't realize that the State Archive had the capability of storing material electronically, and my understanding of their operations is very dated because I haven't really worked on those issues for a while, but they do actually have server capacity and are capturing webpages.
I can't actually speak to that. I just know what they've been instructed to do and why we have metadata that we add to webpages in order for them to be able to do that, but I have to tell you, I don't really know how, you know.
We can find out.
How it's done. I would be interested in knowing that. Well, just to echo something Commissioner Lindley hinted at, or more than hinted at a moment ago, transparency, I think, is really important for this agency, and, you know, we've got to manage our documents and our webpage in a way that's useful and helpful for the public and that they can get their hands on the information they need, of course, without getting bogged down with a bunch of extraneous, ancient stuff. need, of course, without getting bogged down with a bunch of extraneous, ancient stuff. But somebody, somewhere, might find that ancient, extraneous stuff interesting or useful. Certainly, it's subject to open records requests. So I'm, I'm wondering if maybe there's a, a public-facing repository might be a good solution for that. Just have a, an archive that just, if somebody wants to go dig around in our ancient material, I don't know if that's a good idea, but that, but it's, it's, it's a suggestion that's just sort of borne out in, you know, let's just let the public have access to all this information and, and be right up front about it to the extent anybody ever wants to look at it.
And I think that's something we can look at. IRD's gonna need to weigh in on that, just kind of for a capacity.
Right. A source, storage capacity issues, and, and there are also record retention, I mean, the Record Retention Act, maybe that's the short name. I haven't looked at that statute in a while either, but it's actually the Record Retention and Destruction Act, and we're required at some point probably to destroy some of those documents, but.
I think that's a great idea. You know, I mean, it, it's a very technical, technologically thing, and I am not an expert in that kind of thing, but, you know, people hear the word deleted, and it causes a sense of panic, and while I don't think that's warranted, because it sounds like our data is current and the things that the public would need access to are there. And I, I don't think that, you know, we've taken anything light as far as moving content different places, but, you know, we just, we need to be reassuring to everyone out there that if that data were to be requested, or if people wanted access to it, it could be provided. And I don't know the logistics of how to do that. I think we do it well, but just.
If I could add into there, of course, there is the central records as the system out there, so that for, definitely for a lot of retention, there's that. A lot of the documents on the public website that we're probably talking about would be older guidance and, you know, things of that nature that, and that aren't part of the central records portion of it. And a lot of the data that's on the website actually is in databases, and so that's not, that's not part of this project at all.
That's good to know, yeah.
And there's, the, the data management piece, I mean, it's, it probably could be a comprehensive, longer discussion, I mean, because there, there is an effort to take what we have in central records and make it available on our website, and that's at a cost.
Yeah.
So it's kind of a constant data management, compliance with record retention requirements. I, for example, saw a document, and it was on our ShareNet, for, and I'll, I'll pick on Farrell. So if you go to IGR's, the, the ShareNet, it has information about bills that we've reviewed for this session, so that's available for folks to see internally because it's our work product, so to speak. But then there's also a document from 2013 about issues from 2013. So that's the kind of stuff that, you know, is probably each division could probably go through and look and see like, okay, where does this fit in record retention? Is, you know, is this something that we should take down? What then becomes of it?
Right.
And then, to be fair to the divisions, we have the workload for the customers and the public, and then this is one more piece of it. So it's, it's just, it's balancing all of, you know, the, the mix of what we have to do, so.
Appreciate that.
Yeah. I appreciate all the work that is going into that project and will continue to go on. That's a heavy lift.
It's a big one.
And keeping, you know, our, our documents on the public website that are guidance documents and all that kind of stuff, obviously we want those the most current version, you know, and I would never want to confuse the public, so I feel like that would be somewhat of a priority to make sure those, those kind of things are always current, and, and I think we do that, but just so we don't, obviously, if we have too much data, there also adds confusion, so it's kind of a fine line. I appreciate that y'all are walking it well.
Mr. McWhorter?
I appreciate the work you're doing. I don't have anything to add.
Anything else for the good of the order?
No, Chairman, nothing from us. I will tell you, once, you know, session's over and some of the stuff we've been dealing with the last month and a half settles down, it's always been on my radar to try to figure out how to make our website better, and I think that, uh, once we have a little bandwidth and we can start sitting down, really having some meaningful discussions about that, I think it's, it would be worthwhile. I know, for example, some federal agencies have been pretty successful in streamlining and making their, their websites more user-friendly, and it's not outside their own possibility to have some conversations with them about how they did that, so we don't necessarily have to reinvent the wheel. So we may be looking at some of those things coming over the next few months.
Great. Thank you. I think that does it for that item.
Okay. Item number four is a public comment session, and I don't believe we have anyone signed in to speak at this time. So that takes us to the end of the items posted for open session, and. Okay. Item number five was for closed session, but the Commission will not meet in closed session today.
So the time's 10:06, and the work session is adjourned. Thank you all.
Mm-hmm. Talk about it anymore.
Yep.